The meeting. Uh, the meeting. The sound board will come forward. Uh, first time on the agenda is miscellaneous business. Uh, approval of the amendment for June 19th, 2014. Long granted on the, uh, email. Oh, typos. I don't know if we all had a chance to read it.
A couple of typos.
Were you in motion for such a new?
I am so moved.
Circuit. Any discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Long, uh, decision on, uh... 39 Hillside Street. Yes. Oh, damn. I worked closely with him. I'm scared to death. All right. Do I have to read the whole thing? Okay. I don't really get an opinion of that. Reading it to be, uh... Incorporated with reference.
And, and make reference, and just read the findings, is that sufficient? Or you just make reference to the fact that it's...
I don't think I have to read the whole finding.
You don't think so?
Say we have a finding, it's on the one that's here.
That's not a thing.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking it is. What would we do about it? Decision. Well, that's different. That's, that's different. Everybody's got to read it, say, right?
Oh, it's late.
Oh. Oh, God. God love ya. Bless your works. Okay. Case number 81404. Decision, the Rowley's only vote of appeals and will protect his own bylaw petition with Richard Chongwell dated May 30th, 2014, with special permit on property located 39 Hillside Street to instruct an exterior decked dashboard assistance single-family residence at the public hearing at the town, Rowley Town Hall, Pannett's Center School, on June 19th, 2014. And was acting on his case along W. Thurston Chandler. Both pressing members today who like Daniel Thomas and Robert Thomas, of the High York Clerk. Pursuant to public known as Richard Day, leaving the town hall newspaper in general circulation in town Rowley, published on July 2014, on the 18th of June 2014, by mail and sent posted to the date of all parties' leaders as the fight against general laws, chapter 48, Act 11. And as such, listed parties were certified by the town assessors and authorities they were. Into the town clerk, planning board, board selectmen, and other persons providing posted and conspicuous place in Rowley Town Hall for not less than 14 days. The lane is located in the residential district and is shown in the assessors' map 19, 22, Botman, 9. The deed is recorded as especially as deeds booked 1,015,068, page 496. The applicant is requesting a special permit under section 6.1, 3.1, which states that, quote, "No structure shall be built within 15 feet of street lines and 15 feet from the law." The board determines that, the board intended to hope, since the board determines that there will be no substantial change to the nature of the structure, in the opinion of the board that we propose, the structure will not continue to be kept as it is in the day of approval, approve the application. Chairman over the public hearing, who informed that it was no conflict of interest by him to approve the application. Blue, case material at the public hearing from October 2nd, 2014, at approximately 7:15 p.m. The advocate, Richard Chongwell, was present at the hearing, certified letters, was supposed to be due and accepted, presence of the sign and certified permit license claimant's form for the town of Rowley is also submitted and accepted. The applicant discussed the basis for the need, the, his hearings stating that he requested construction for the purpose of expanding outdoor access to the yard for added family convenience. Mr. Chongwell, no body in the court will answer, see attached. Describe proposed deck. He noted that the application is based on the fact that while the proposed construction of the deck was assessed and located within property lines, it did not pose any negative visual issues to the neighborhood through construction of the family culture. One property sideline, foot set back by seven inches, while it would be creating an exterior decked system to the residence, the closing setback did not deter it from creating, not reforming, that would change the character of the property, the increase in technical torque on the footprint of structure, as filed up the board's side. Chairman noted letters from the Board of Health, Board of Land and Board, see attached, in which each expressed no concern. After reviewing any other hearing testimony from either the providers or other senior bodies or facility non-present, the review of all pertinent data completed, the board determined the words sufficient grounds for granting special permit. Based on the above, the board voted to grant an approval decision with special permit requested construction of the following foot by 16-foot deck related to 14, 18-foot sideline at 39 Hillside Street under section 6.1, 3.1. The board voted on the July 17th, 2014 meeting. Board finally, board after consulting through a review of the application, proposed new deck to be built on the site for special consideration, respect to sites and act laws, and considering the applicant's desire to maintain the character of the site and maintain the integrity of the structure now assisting on the site, finds the application for the addition of the deck, so to... Deck, to state that that was to be, quote, having more detrimental concerns under forming structure of the deck, took the big foot in the vote, and agreed to issuing a special permit to construct the decks as requested on-site plan, provided its part of the virtual annotation shown in the company's broadway, daily. May 27th, 2014, J.R. B. Carlson, P.S. Therefore, the board voted to approve the special permit as requested under section 6.1, 3.1, and in such following conditions. If the final plan showing location and structure of the deck was to be approved by the board as best, the applicant shall obtain and submit to the sound board appeals and letters of said inspector and copy of the voting to approve. The board has approved. Two, any changes to the plans implied with this application, resulting from the vote reviewed, including the likely problems for the sound board appeals and review, and approve of the five, five registered deals. Three, board requires a gap of five, files a copy of said decision in West Street News and provides, you receive, West Street confirmed, such no later than 30 days from the end of the deal period, made it to do so result in the question of, CPA, the building inspector to which may cease and disallow until such time, the board receives your registry, receive the rest of the... Four, failure to comply to the provisions of this decision, the time of the use of the ground, the building inspector to what on operation of all construction business, location to cease. Voting the 70th day of July 14, July 2014. All favor?
Aye.
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 It has passed.
There's...
Got the sign. This is that day.
I saw you go to the meeting for a morning. I'm glad you're here. Are you? Are you? I've come to the place.
At this time, I would like to officially open your copy here, including those four again. I ask you to excuse yourself, uh, as I understand you're in the attorney of this case. The next item on the agenda is case number 1405, uh, 112 Central Street. Stuart Peter Delzell, a single-family law construction, section 5.4, 2. Public hearing for case number 1405 of Stuart Peter Delzell, and a special permit at 112 Central Street is now open. This public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion. I ask that cooperation is followed in the procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard after the application is presented and the board members have asked questions. The secretary will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address, and speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Does any member of the board have any interest in this process?
No.
Public notice for this application is posted in the town hall, sent to the certified parties of interest to its publishing in town hall in July 9th, 2014 to July 16th, 2014, and reads as follows. Case number 1405, the public hearing will be held in town hall, Pannett's 39 Central Street, on Thursday, July 17th, 2014, at 7:15 p.m. To back on the application received, December 30th, 2014, Stuart Peter Delzell, at 60 Warehouse Lane, Rowley, Mass. An applicant is requesting a special permit for the Board of Appeals to tear down existing dwelling and building movement, family drawing, under requirements of section 5.4.2, where the Rowley Protecting its Own Bylaws. The property is located at 112 Central Street, Rowley, Mass. The property is in the Alphardt District official, assessors' map 24, Rowley, 30. Purpose of this hearing is for the board's hearing to consider pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve the conditions in time. The board hearing, the public, the applicant will be allowed to present their case, and the public will be allowed to ask questions to the public. The applicant will ask, or, Stuart, or leader.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Stuart Delzell. My son is Peter.
I sit in there.
It's one of the good looks you're looking at. Come on. Your son's nose is here. I'd like to go to the smaller house. He has set back 40 feet from the road. Anna McDee, 27 feet from Mr. and Mrs. White, and 16 feet from, uh, Ed McMahon. Kevin Bean, 78 feet, I believe, with that guy in the subject system. He had a bump, bump out on the, uh, he had a plan to be, Mr. and Mrs. Commission, take care of us, but it was upstairs, we took that off, and I thought that she had my vehicle brought, and it's probably still left, or that's, uh, permission, August 5th.
So here's all the construction plans, such as that?
Yes.
This is basically the same house that you were, over, over...
Yes, but, uh, we took the, the home loan, the money from the upstairs. This, Mr. and Mrs. White uses driveway, and the landlord uses the driveway, and the law line goes to that foundation, so, we'll handle it right away, yeah. Just so somebody doesn't have a problem taking his, fifty years down the road. It's all fine.
We have total lead for eight, five foot.
Good, hey?
We have total lead of five foot.
The watch.
12,827 feet. A little bit larger than I thought it was.
You know, you're saying, this is gonna be the driveway. That driver coming here.
Coming in straight. Yes, this would be the driveway over here.
Yeah, okay.
Look. This, there's a right way, this here, record. Record it, just so we don't take the driveway away from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. White and these people, folks, the dudes that took us, like I said, there's no problem down the road.
Okay, so, this is why I'm going, going inside.
Yeah, that's correct.
Long, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for that for help.
Can I respond? Because I represent, uh, Mr. Delzell, this is a right of way that the Whites have had since, goes back to 1894. It's never been depicted. It's 65 feet long, 12 feet wide, six feet on each property line. It's historically been used that way. What we're gonna do is just depict it. I'm just talking to Mr. and Mrs. White, we're gonna do exactly as they want, it's historically been done that way, so we'll record it, so that it's been depicted, there'll never be a question as to where it exists, going forward. Because there's a cloud, and you did the title, there was an issue as to, is that really where it is? You know, it was really mixed. So we wanted to have, just have a plan depicted, which historically has been. So that, that clarifies the issue in terms of access. And, uh, so what, we're gonna do that, we haven't developed that plan yet, though. But we will, working with John Decoulis, the surveyor, we'll depict the plan that Mr. and Mrs. White want with regard to their, their access, historical access to their property. There'll also be a driveway, right, Stu, I believe, for, this is gonna be a driveway for the garage.
Yes.
Which is a sub-entrance.
Mr. and Mrs. White will still be able to connect to their van, their back end.
Is there a functioning driveway there right now?
Yes.
It is?
It's been used, historically it's dirt, it's not paved. It's just a dirt driveway. It's been used since 1894.
And it's the, it's the principal driveway to the property to access the structure?
Correct. It's the principal access to both properties, historically.
And it's never been depicted?
Never been depicted. Never been depicted. So, we're just depicting it because it's, it's, clarity's required in the situation.
Yeah. Many years ago, this, this White property, this property, Rowland Ben, uh, store, eighty years ago, Mr. and Mrs. White coffee's a fine store.
I remember that one.
That's before my time.
Well, I remember going in there and buying coffee. They were the only ones that had coffee. That is in a bag. No, I didn't accomplish.
You're dating yourself now.
Well, yeah. 'Cause I'm older than you.
Coffee in a bag, would that leak all over the place?
How about grounds, you know, in a bag?
Oh, oh, they grow.
Had around a branch of beans, huh? Yeah, so you, put the house back 40 feet, the original house is outside of the street.
Actually, the front porch here is right to the street. Very nice.
And what's the square footage of the current property? Or what's the square footage?
Uh, 12,847 square feet.
Uh, no, I'm sorry. How's that?
Well, uh...
I see yours is 1794.
Okay, this one is, this one's, uh...
It's a muddy, good, uh, muddy deep.
Dog out here. Need a scale to take it just what it was. Cause they don't actually size out.
So, angle of view?
Yes, sir. This one would be just under eight hundred square feet.
They gotta push back 40. Two forty?
Yes.
39.
Oh, well, the dog, I'm just, just asking.
Yeah, 40.
None of it is, it's all good, it's from the foundation, okay. I'm watching, show me there. So, why don't you push it back 70? Why not, why?
Why not? Didn't people want to use the backyard in the subject system?
Is this house going to be, be not everybody's house?
It's 18.
Is this house gonna be, location-wise?
Looking to be a houses up the street. Okay, uh, Mr. and Mrs. White, they're about just across the street. This is, man, just back a little more. Need to be back further.
Uh, it's the intent to, uh, push the house back, so it, uh, move back a little bit, in case of fire.
Intent to push the house back, away from the street more. I think it would be better, lift it back as much as we could and still leave, leave the backyard.
Would put it for how many, for that house, if it were in a fire?
Oh, by all means, uh... You'll be putting the street right inside, right by the law line. For the, uh, the justice of that. And if I'm, this, this one's much further, further away from the, uh, on the line, we decide.
The whites here?
Yes, they are.
Uh, I just wanna know if we agree with the location of the house.
I don't think they've seen it until.
We, we have not seen the house, uh, location or anything relating to.
It's probably okay.
The new structure.
Probably okay with us, whatever they do.
But we haven't seen anything.
I mean, you should.
How far?
Looks good.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
As soon as they come up, respect of the fire or safety. It's away from the, the historical buildings, they agreed upon them before. So that, in fact, the fire, if you had the fire, you saw, they had washed down the house next door. So where it's located back, it's a smaller house. It's got a good separation from the houses on both sides. So it's much safer in terms of fire and access. It's a really big deal.
Also, aesthetics.
Oh geez.
Thank you.
Okay, it's beautiful.
Historical.
Okay.
Stu, how, how much clearing of the current trees and vegetation in the front, uh, where, where the current house is, is gonna be torn down? Is any of that gonna be cleared out, so that there's a, front yard is cleared, or is, or is those?
Ask the bill, I, I swear the vines and the, well, better sweet heavy, and the bamboo holding the house up now. So, extensive clearance.
So a lot of it will be cleared out? And what about the, the cellar I see here on the blueprint? Is that gonna be unfinished basement?
Yes.
Is that probably where the laundry room's gonna go?
I can't answer that honestly.
Drawing it off, that is a big issue, but just curious about that.
No, no, I'm very happy with the setback from April.
I don't wanna say yes to the laundry room, or in the basement, some people want some on the first floor.
Right. Subtlety one out back through?
Yes. To, to tell you how densely that was thrown in. There's an old truck in the backyard, and I was looking through the bamboo for it. And I almost walked into it, but that fell in front of me.
Is it gonna, Stu, is that gonna, therefore, are you clearing a lot to put this structure, where you're gonna clear relative to the current structure? Is there much of a rear yard behind the current, or you have, clear all kinds of stuff out there?
It's just a brush that's gone.
It's all weeds if you go look at it.
It's brush.
Most normal people would've had it, you know, cleared out.
Yeah, probably.
Can't even move around, looking at it.
Maybe some need to be in backyard.
Yes, well, I think you asked the only, I, I think the only relevant question for us is the setback issue. I mean, the house looks great. Uh, I think it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood, whether it's thirty, ten feet or fifty. I think the only question is, that the planning board enunciated was, why not go fifty, as opposed to your forty? And you're saying that ten feet would incur too much into whatever the rear yard and septic area is going to be?
I just, I just felt, family who did have, for kids, have a decent yard for the kids to play, we push it back to fifty, septic.
Kinda blend in with the rest of the house. It's free. I don't think we'd want to push it. No, I wouldn't push it back. This house next door is right, the whites is right along the street. And this house, uh, chief was right by the street. And the next house is backwards. Is that your house? How far from this street are you?
I'm back further than.
Back, you're back.
That's the whole lot. No, this, this is the lot. In the house, right here. This, this, there's a house right here, back down the white sauce. Yeah, I know.
Reason why it obviously isn't plonked down?
Right, that's not the footprint of the house.
Is there any obvious reason for that? Just.
No, sixteen feet.
Phil. Answer your question, washing dry looks like it's on the first floor.
On the first floor. This, this looks twenty-seven feet, because the right-of-way would be, is twelve foot, twelve feet, so that would be fifteen.
I see.
I interpret it as the shower.
I don't see any issue. Maybe you got it, you got a non-conforming lot, and we're putting in a new property, moving it back in the street. The butters seem to be pleased with the.
I didn't see it.
You haven't seen a picture of what's been done? Still not sure. This is the center. There, one can hold it with the appearance. Yeah.
Live on this lot.
Yeah, I mean, he's.
It has to be non-conforming to come on this section. This is the death of it. It's not gonna fall down cause of this.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's another big argument.
Rather than you, I'm gonna supply that. Otherwise, nobody wants to build, actually.
Yeah. Yeah. Stu, we've got, there are two elements to this that I just wanna have you address, of course.
Sure.
Um, that, I think they're pretty straightforward. Going from a non-conforming situation in, in the form of where the existing structure was. Non-conforming because it's within both front and side setback. The new situation, uh, changes that. Can you tell me a little bit more about how the new situation addresses the non-conformity? Insofar as making it any better than it is now?
Sure. The existing house is right on the line. Practically on the line of, uh, Pat Mancil. And the new home would be sixteen feet.
Nine hundred ninety.
So should be gaining, should be gaining a strong, uh, better by with seventeen feet.
And your front setback is, is going from what?
Nothing but forty feet.
So in both cases, we have a non-conforming situation, it's getting better.
It, it, it's, it's, it's better. Both the butters will, will have more elbow room.
Have a better view of the street, too.
Bamboo will be cleaned up, and this is some of this bamboo. Larry White will verify to this, which is twenty feet off, and it's thin. So that'll be going, gonna be out.
Anyone else wants to voice an opinion that hasn't been heard?
Uh, yes, Larry White, one oh eight Central Street. Uh, one question I have, I don't know how this plays into it, but where the driveway is being moved, even though there's a easement granted on the one twelve side, what will keep that as a usable part of the driveway? As opposed to it just being left to overgrow or, uh, even though we might have a easement to use it, but we'll say if the person plants bamboo on that six feet, it becomes unusable. Right now, it's a shared driveway, but in the future, of course, it's no longer a shared driveway.
Well, it's still a, it'll still be a right-of-way, so if these folks wanted to get all bad, they'd go around that way.
Okay.
Just for example, under septic tank pump, they could back in there or whatever.
So, okay.
And other way, full party, full, you and Mrs. White, and these folks, could share that right-of-way. But this won't be the, uh, primary driveway, the regular driveway will be here.
Right, but we both have to upkeep our portions of it as accessible.
Right.
Okay. And then the other thing, on our, uh, plan, uh, the right-of-way shows ending at the, uh, far end of the barn. And the depiction that you have there, it says the full length of, uh, of the property.
It's just like, that, that depiction's not being seen by this board. That's a private matter between the parties. And we have presented a depiction which showed an old easement, granted nineteen eighty-four. The Whites are not happy with that depiction. So we're gonna work it out to satisfy the Whites. And we'll put into the easement agreement, we have to maintain, uh, both, both sides have to maintain their property. So you're always in access.
Okay, fine.
We'll protect that. That's probably written easement agreement we have to come up with. So we intend to depict it, working with John Decoulis. Historically, you want it back to its original dimensions. And we'll, we'll create an agreement surrounding that and make it work for you.
Okay.
And when there's a conflict in terms of possible other easements from prior periods, we'll have to probably just, um, dispense with them. Get rid of them somehow. So we'll just give you one depiction, which you'll satisfy me.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. Stu, could you mark here where that right-of-way is?
Sure.
So it's, it's on both properties?
No, 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 it's over here, it's over here.
Is that what this is?
It's like this.
It's like where.
Right here, see? That's the old stormwater right of way.
This is the property we're talking about right here? I mean, it's on both, both sides?
Right. You wanna see that, I can press that along.
Did, did you get a answer sufficient? Because I think Mr. Covering is.
Uh, yes, yes.
Is relevant to the two parties, it's not board issue.
Right.
Right.
Uh, you satisfied what you see?
Uh, yeah. Has it been surveyed yet?
Hasn't been.
Decoulis was working on that. It's been, of course, the story, uh, septic design.
I think we're gonna need to talk then.
Do you think?
I think we're going to need to talk.
Oh.
About some logistics of moving the earth, you know, all the digging that you're gonna have to do. In my sense.
I can't handle the introduction, I'm sorry.
I, I know, I'm heading that direction too. I know you're gonna have to really turn the earth around. You know, there's gonna be a lot of, I know what's back there. So you and I are gonna need to talk about how you do that without disrupting my border.
Well, that's no problem, I know going near the, over on your leg. You know me long, you know me long enough, I'll work with you.
I'm not too nervous.
Okay. One of the, one of the main things here, is to see that Mrs. White cannot get cut out of the driveway if they have been using. That's why we went to three links. Mr. Covering here, attorney with three links.
You have a question? Do, do we need to address the issues at conservation? Uh, maybe let's play the place. Those two, three and four, far. Ask Justin, do you think? Stormwater erosion control. Preventing erosion. Probling properties, like, add it, this, this address.
Uh, we, we, we have some, Stu, some letters.
This is what's called in lights, like, you'll probably have that property from conservation.
Okay, I have the letter. I have a letter from the conservation. I have a letter from, uh, Mr. Tim Barbrick, and I got the memo, the board of health. Uh, the chairman's own board appeals, but basically, one thing. Day July seventeen, two thousand fourteen. Fairness case number fourteen point oh five, one twelve Central Street, South twenty-fourth, last block, eighty-three. Stuart Peter Delzel, by the name of fine. Chairman Thursday members of his own board appeals, conservation department has reviewed the application. This middle's in office, following promise. One, conservation department has no objection to proposed demolition. End construction of a single-family dwelling on set from original structural location. Two, the applicant should be advised of stormwater management and ocean control by law, which requires the use of appropriate control measures to prevent erosion and certification on problematic properties. Public right-of-way, wetlands, watercourses. The included foundation plans are signed on site for details. Three, conservation department requests that the EBA require that roof on our beach and for trade for proposed structure, permanent stairs. Apply appropriate measures to recharge groundwater using by means of subsurface dry well. Desire for softness will improve proposed and required construction. Four, conservation department requests that the EBA require appropriate measures to prepare the trapping offsetment and soils from demolition and construction site. Along with Central Street, one of the, it's cracked, it's shields, and a block. We have by catchers, this in interest of public safety, protection of the environment. Thank you for your consideration, which applies to likely frivolous and, and brazen, conservation. Chief Rodden, uh, sent this a letter, July eighteen, two thousand fourteen. On the rallies on the board of appeals, thirty-nine Central Street, all of that, case number fourteen point oh five, one twelve Central Street. Dear members of the board, client property has received the application in the aforementioned case, and after we deal with the application, the apartment has no issues with what is proposed, the development of the structure, coverage structure. Here's the zoning company, Health Department, its only board of appeals, Health Department, dated July 15, 2014. The 911 Fall Central Street, now 24 block 33, at the story, Stuart and Peter Del Zell, CBA application 14.04, 5, 14.05. The application for 112 Central Street has been renewed. There is no septic system information available to this property. Even drawing the cracks are entitled by information of the septic system, releasing it to the Health Department. The Health Department does not have permission to change for the, the building is proposed the application. The septic system, releasing it to the Health Department. The Health Department does not have permission to change for the, the building is proposed the application. I think that'll be coming with the block of building. That'll be all taken care of, they've talked about calling out the check out here.
It seems to me that the, uh, the i- issues brought, uh, brought the foreback of conservation commission, that the address is conditional.
Doesn't hurt. Build a house, I mean, when you build, any type of house, that's all done when you get a building permit.
Does Ken normally, does Ken or Riley advise an applicant for a building permit about stormwater violation?
Well, what they do is they make you put, or he gets them all, they're gonna make you put, uh, he wants, uh, bales of hay around certain areas.
Right, I, I was, I was thinking that it, that
He has to sign off.
He, if we want to, we can simply include his condition, and he'll, he'll work it out with them and have it, you know, under him. I mean, Brent is asking us to address it, you unignored.
I just, I've never heard about it before, going in, I mean, to build a house, we've never done any of that in the past.
No, but, but as John Nikoulis is well aware, stormwater management control systems create all kinds of issues.
That's not a big development, yeah, but we're talking just one block.
No, but it's No, I know, and again, I'm only mentioning It could be easily put as a condition for them to convert, discuss with, uh, Ken, if Ken signs on on it, then we're good.
What's, what's Tom saying is
I just, if I could be, that'll all be addressed on the septic system, isn't it? It's all there.
But what Tom was saying, like, for example, the gutters on the house, just in case they wanted small dry wells, that the dumb folks would have overwashed. Subservers.
Yeah, no, it's minor stuff, and in fact, the, the last item is, is to some degree what you're talking about, I mean, it's in a more, it's in a more generic public context, is that you're neat about when you're tracking stuff out of a property, so that there's a traffic all over the place or traffic by vehicle, that's all. I mean, that, I mean, I'm good. We can simply reference their letter.
It's a really need to hear here, and we make a move, we start. Peter, let me off there with a problem.
Anybody else with any questions?
Time I can do it, but you may correct.
Don't worry about it.
She's right here.
We're gonna correct you anyways. I'll need to get back to, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the plans with the forty, forty foot setbacks on the front and the side, sixteen feet, nine inches, and twenty-seven feet, one inch on the left side. They have their own driveway, and we're still gonna have the right of way, which they're gonna work out. Looks like it'd be a nice performance.
Making a motion to maintain this proposal of the plan.
Right.
Second?
Aye.
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 Aye. Terrence. You want to enter the motion to draft a decision?
I have to tell you, gentlemen, oh, watch me. The gentleman I have to help Lisa for your secretary, she gives a point hundred and ten percent.
Now, we're gonna have to give a little, I don't think so. Hundred and twenty. Yeah, she's great.
That's a great one.
We know that, Stu, but good to hear, a lot of times you don't hear of it enough.
She's wonderful.
Okay. Do you have a motion to have, uh, draft it?
I know that they could draft an approval decision. That's all.
Motion's okay.
Aye. Aye.
My motion to oppose this, sir.
Motion's So much to have.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Hey, there.
It's John Nikoulis.
And, uh, right now we're living on vacation, and
Yeah, that came today, but that was, that's why I was, that's the forty foot.
Oh, okay.
And he's also, we all, he also gave us this, not one flat, that was just basically, that's their request really.
So on the, if he gives it, it's okay to, and, um, and, uh, so I showed him.
We, she's, she's on the right. I know, yes, I know.
That's that road that goes up and comes out, up and
Goes up, it goes up, it goes up. I think yours is, it's a word.
He's off of that.
It's just down the road, so, you know, it's a place, it's right on the water, you said, like, it's nice.
Four years ago we walked that.
Six steps down, it's, it stays up perfectly for Do you have a card, or is it cards, someone can call you, that we might have, I don't think so, like, that, these days.
No, no.
I don't think, oh, we're gonna have to, um,
No, I'm sorry.
Just if we have any questions, I, and I should be able to reach three now. Uh, I'm, I Yeah, I'll try to call. Give us cell phone number, for emergency? Now, this is only for an emergency. During regular times. I don't even know where my cell phone But when I'm on vacation, I feel weird.
Do they run that, they probably, they probably
They're everywhere.
Just wanna leave a message, because yes, everybody's left me for, always come home every afternoon.
He shouldn't even, he shouldn't even be addressing a lot of us.
I was thinking, so we did it, the patient wanted to get trucks down here, and I said, oh, we, we would give it to you, permission of temporary permission to
Where we going? What's up?
Sorry. He'll be familiar face here. Sitting at this.
Sounds like we've got forty years old.
We've been on this thing's that long. He gets paid and we don't.
Our best friend. I didn't update John, he's updated us. I don't see any point doing anything until we hear more from the one, and two, until we hear something that is so good. We, and he's complied pretty much with everything, gee, I mean, we now, we're gonna be in L, you know. He says we don't need a line, I know. Distinction about, uh, description about what particular waivers you see. We've got determined plans. The only thing we'll wait for is any more stuff from, of course, length, but it eventually comes back to John, uh, outside of that. You know, he said, last time John mentioned that they responded positively to their response to their, uh, request, original request for, uh, corrections to the site. Okay. I think, you know, I think John is, they find, if I were just easily, if he wants to extend it, if he wants to close it. I'm closing here in time.
Do I wanna close it?
Yeah, you wanna close it.
Can I?
Yeah.
But you gotta have a vote.
I'm sorry?
Cause if you close it, we can't consider anything, and you'll, you'll force us into an action very soon if you do that. Otherwise, we'll ask you to continue, probably.
Yeah, I, I, I think we oughta continue.
There goes that bear trap.
I'm sorry?
They said it was a bear trap, and you didn't step on it.
Cause you can request the closure.
So we're just gonna continue on, right?
So do you have any further for us tonight?
We're still waiting for our attorney to, uh, submit the proper documents to the board of selectmen to, uh, request a withdrawal from chapter sixty-one on the property. Out of its due to vacations, but I was hoping to hear from him today, but we haven't. And we heard from the conservation commission, the technical review agent, and, uh, they've agreed with most of our proposals. There's a couple of drafting glitches that we have to correct, and, and, uh, there's some more, uh, stormwater engineering that we've got to do, but it's, it's doable. It's, it has to do with the, uh, second infiltration basin at the end of the street. And, uh, we're working on it, and we just got it, we just got the answer the other day, and we're working on it, we're gonna respond shortly. That's, that's about where we're at.
We, we, I, I think it's relevant to point that we are still waiting for feedback from the board's consultants regarding the eligibility letter being written to the trust as opposed to the applicant, Mr., uh, Frank, what? The developer's last name, it's Frank?
Frangos.
Frangos.
Yeah.
And, and the decision that there may, there may still be some ambiguity around that fact, so we're waiting to hear on that. Outside of that, we'll just wait to hear, you know, when you report something.
So we continue this, so?
Generally, they give us something, right?
Yeah, I, I do have.
Have you got something?
I would expect you to.
Grabbing coffee. Change the, you just changed the big.
That's fine, that's fine.
As long as you're comfortable, we're comfortable.
All right. John Toulis, uh, marrying Wade Project, dear board of, I think, you know, public hearing, marrying Wade Project, here, I guess, twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. Very timely yours, John. The motion to accept this letter.
So much. Second?
Motion made, second, all things.
Aye.
Aye. We accept the letter, and we want to do it till Okay?
Thanks, John.
Thank you. The next item we have is a discussion of seven forty-five, uh, not seven forty-five, seven forty-four.
It's too late, we'll take that up next one.
Next meeting, we'll head it. Signed, you, it seems that artistic landscapes, uh, as a thought.
Artistic landscapes.
So one on rule one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's where, uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's where Frank looks out for us.
No, uh, good paper, uh, who's, uh, kind of player. No, uh, Kurt Baker, uh, for, uh, California. I'm trying to come. I can't, I don't know. I'm lost, I'm just being... Second. I think we've got... Yeah, they do, they do. To get past the issue of whether the proposed... Okay. This is the letter from Kurt, uh, Baker. In regards to the issue of one of the proposed illuminated building signage, one of them new report, artistic landscapes LLC requires a bearing to the CPA, the planning board, to be a special permit that allows the man to sign dimensions along the second amendment approval, sign this note. On the inside. I have submitted a request for legal opinion to town council. I report back to the CPA for their response.
Okay. That is the end of that one.
Wouldn't that be a planable?
Now, the, the, the issue that's come up here is that the bond, the signed bylaw specifically states that the planning board has the permit granting authority over illuminated signs. And there, there's a context here of what we actually ultimately mean by illuminated signs only because the bylaw is not clear. An illuminated sign, as you well know, could be a li... A light shining on a sign. Whether it's below or above.
Can't be below.
Okay.
Can't be in the way.
In this instance, in this instance, the signage is such that the letters of the name of the business are lighted internally.
In the shop, yeah.
Yeah. Comes over this light now.
Is that an illuminated sign by your definition?
Yeah.
I don't know what the exact definition of that is.
The one that survives within.
Within? Okay. Of... The second matter, that would seem to make it fall under the planning board's purview for them to do that.
The, the new bylaw is like...
Under the, however, he is asking for signage area that's greater than what the bylaw allows, which makes it a non-conforming illuminated sign. So, the question that arose that Kurt Baker from the planning board sent to us is, huh, do you guys do it because it's not conforming? Or do we do it because it's illuminated, unconforming? And we tossed it around a little bit. And I thought, in my opinion, that anything that's not conforming should come before the zoning board, whatever is, is not conforming, uh, illuminated for us. Kurt said, okay, you may be right. It turns out, after a discussion that we sent on, we're having about it, that the applicant, Tony Hurley, came up to us and, you know, it seemed like there was all of a sudden a matter of urgency here in getting this matter decided. Well, you all know the site. There's not, there's no evidence of a building anywhere near it yet.
That's right.
Um, and he, he, Tony was talking to us, saying, you know, I got off schedule with the ground building of the foundation because he needed to get an earth removal permit that nobody told him about. So, he had all that earth there that he couldn't move. He had to get a permit. He lost a week or ten days there. That pushed him back on being able to get the foundation cut in, which pushed him back on being able to set the building, which was gonna be delivered and put up. So, he's been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. So, the relevance of this signage is really a bit secondary now because he was hoping it would, he had a building in there now. Remember when we approved it back in, in last summer? He wanted to have something in the ground.
Yeah, by winter.
By winter, so we could have a shell to burn with.
Yeah.
Well, it's July, and we're still looking a pile up there. I feel bad for the guy. It's, it's totally out of his control. And then these little extra things got in the way. So, Kurt evidently has, as Don said, has decided to go to Judy to get an opinion as to whether or not it should be us because it's not conforming or it could just stay the same. We originally said go to the planning board's illuminated sign.
Yeah, it's commercial. I mean, that's their whole call. Well, wouldn't we, wouldn't it promote them?
I just assumed it was non-conforming. It's a non-conforming sign. Does he want...
Yeah, because he's going larger than what we're... Were you, Wyatt?
Yeah.
Why are we even letting him do that?
Well, we, he hasn't. When, when he originally submitted, we all just said, it's a sign, you should go to them.
Right, yeah.
And now, when they looked at it, I mean, we didn't even inquire what the size was. We just said, go and talk to him.
Right.
Because, you know, he has no other signage that he's placed, or at least, I don't think he has.
Probably enough with another one.
And he, and he, remember how we did Fox Run?
Yeah.
The same kind of thing. You know, it was a non-conforming sign that they had to come to us to approve because it was a non-conforming sign. In addition to the signage on the building, I don't know what he's gonna do this time. So, in fact, the matter is, to make a long story short, the subject right now is moot until Judy now gives us an opinion. He, if it comes back, it's not conforming, he'll come before us. And, I mean, it's just, the guy's just gonna have his name on the building that's sixty-five feet across. He's gonna have, I think they're about, uh, two-foot letters by itself, so it's, you know... And the building is set down. So, I, I just imagine we'll have an issue with it.
So, it was... It was sixty miles an hour on the highway.
Well, that's why we have to do it, right?
No, 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 but the statute says hardship, you have to have a hardship. And it has to, hardship has to relate to shape of the lot.
Oh, yeah, well, that's for variance.
That's what we're talking about. That's the only reason we'd be here.
No, we'll get a, no, we'll give a special permit.
Special permit, of course.
You're right. I wouldn't want to have to play, I mean, we could, we could...
But the letter I read was talking about if it comes back here, it's under a variance.
Well, I, I, I believe...
Since the other issue is...
I, I believe Kurt's interpretation of these, uh, of these matters, uh... He uses the term variance loosely. I don't think, I, I don't think he recognizes what you're saying. It's very restrictive, you know? And it's a little odd lot here because it's low, it's back. And, and we might be able to cobble together enough conditions to do it under a variance. And we thought about it, looked at it. But it's much easier to just do a special permit if, as a non-conforming, as a non-conforming granted act.
Yeah, see, I was under the impression what you're saying is, if it's a special permit, it's the planning board. The only reason we'd be here is that it needs a variance.
No, no, no. I meant, I, I should have clarified. I meant, the only reason it's here is it's non-conforming and should be a special permit out of us as opposed to a variance. And I, I've seen Kurt review a number of our cases and believe that the applications were relative to variances, which is, you know, there's nothing wrong with the ground. We can't, there's nothing that creates a hardship because of the topography or the land. We've only had one or two of those since I've been here.
Yeah, because people talk about, everybody talks about people in the con... People around, they don't talk special permit. They call everything a variance. Everything is a variance, but a variance is, as you know, very restrictive.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think a variance as a general term is what most people think of. Is that something that's different from something else? So, so the notion is anytime you're near, uh, some sort of zoning issue. It's a variance, that's what you're looking for. No, 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 it just, it just so happens that everything's a special permit, right? So, anyhow, it's, we may see him in the next, uh...
We're gonna wait for coming from the...
Yeah, now it's, now Judy, Kurt went to Debbie to ask permission to ask Judy Pickett, town council, uh, an opinion, so we'll wait to see what Judy says. And if Judy says it's not ours, fine. But the, the planning board's, I don't know. I don't think there's an issue that comes to us or them. It's just a question.
Okay.
I have nothing else. Let's...
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second, please, Chris. All faves, as I say, aye? Aye. We're closed. Aye, seven, I will adjourn.